Morning, everybody.
Morning, morning.
It's June the 13th. I don't know where the year's gone, but it's going pretty quick. It's about nine oh, uh, three, nine oh three AM. June 13th, 2023, regular meeting of Liberty County Commissioners Court. Call this meeting to order. Um, and as always, we have our pledges first and then our indications. So today, we have some young'uns from the Liberty Elementary School. Where are y'all? Yeah, y'all stand up and let's take a look at you. Yeah. Thank y'all so much for coming. Uh, y'all getting a good dose of how government works. This is the real government right here. Alrighty, in uh, anyway, uh, Asha Nevers, I think you're there. Let's see, Asha, if you could come up and lead us in our pledges, please, and we'll do the nation's flag first and come on up a little closer, it's great. Then we'll do the Texas flag, okay?
Honored the Texas flag.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you guys. Right, while we're still standing, y'all pray with me, please, this morning. To Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for each and every day that you, you offer us the blessing to get up in the morning and, and go about your will, not our will, but your will. Lord, we thank you for all the many opportunities in life that you grant us. And Lord, may we use these opportunities to help each other, to help one another. Lord, thank you so much for all the wonderful, wonderful blessings. For your grace, your wisdom, your guidance. Lord, we thank you for all these. Lord, there's folks in our county and folks in our cities that are hurting, that, uh, Lord, they need miracles. They're sick. They, they've had accidents, had some type of tragedy. Lord, please bless them. Hold them in your arms, wrap them in your loving arms, cover them with your blood. And Lord, please watch over them and, could be your will, let's get them back. Lord, please be with our men and women in uniform, Lord, our first responders. We have, uh, Lord, we have a, a season coming up. You know what season it is, and I do too. But Lord, we have that season coming up in Florida. Please be with these folks, because they will be out in the front. And each and every day that they are, Lord, I pray that you will bring them home safely, as you always do. Again, Lord, for each and every blessing you bestowed upon us. We thank you for these, Lord. Where we fall short, we ask your forgiveness. In Jesus' most precious name, we pray. Amen. You know, I got an indication the other day that, uh, old friend Pastor Carl Williams retired, that's in, uh, Cleveland. And, uh, usually I get Pastor Carl come down and when we have our, our swearing in ceremonies, we usually get him to come on down to Cleveland and offer a good, a good word for everybody. I'm still gonna try to do that. He thinks he retired. Well, he, he didn't totally retire. But I'll say one thing about Pastor Carl, or Brother Carl's, I call him, that, uh, I could be riding down the highway and my phone will ring, and it'd be Pastor Carl. And he'd say, Jay, I think you need somebody to pray for you. And I said, yes, sir, I sure do. And I said, if you don't mind, let me pull off this road here for a bit, because it's gonna have to be a long, brother Carl, I guarantee you it is. It really, it would normally be a long, long prayer, and I needed that. It, uh, so y'all, if you get a chance, y'all send Brother Carl a, a well wish and whatever his next step in life might be. But we're not gonna totally let him retire, okay? Alrighty. We do have, uh, let's see. Commissioner Arthur's here today, Commissioner Karbowski's here today. Commissioner Wilson's with us online. I'm looking for Commissioner Whitmire.
He won't be here today.
He won't be here today, okay. Alright, so with that, we got quorum. Let's go ahead and move on. Notes and proclamations. We have the first one. The Texas Historical Commission awarded the 2022 Extinguished Service Award, the Liberty County Historical Commission. This award affirms that the Liberty County Historical Commission appointees, uh, for managing our well-rounded history and preservation-related programs that enrich our Texas community. And this isn't the first one, I guarantee you, because these folks, they work quite hard at what they do. And without the recognition that they bring us, it, uh, I mean, it, you think about everything that just evolved here. You know, there's not just a historical part of this, but also the educational part of this. So you young'uns that are going to the elementary school, if you got a question about Liberty County, there's some folks here that can answer your questions. And, uh, one of them's an old school teacher buddy of mine, an old principal buddy of mine, and guarantee you, he might be a little crusty in his description of what happened in Liberty County. You will get the message, okay? Anyway, let's, uh, can y'all come up with the Liberty County Historical Commission folks? Let's. Congratulations, yeah.
Thank you.
I wouldn't give a handshake, I'm giving a hug on this one.
Y'all gather around. Get up, I'll be a second judge.
Well, the Texas Historical Commission presents this 2022 Extinguished Service Award to Liberty County Historical Foundation and Exhibition. It was actively well-rounded preservation program. As described by Mark Wolf, the executive director. We have a community of commissioners who, who, our congratulations and our sincere appreciation to you for everything y'all do. It's not easy. Y'all go in some places where there're just, there's fences and weeds and snakes under the hills. Yeah, but, uh, this is the 2022, how many of these have y'all?
About ten.
About ten, okay.
About ten.
Great, and, uh, listen, here, I'm not handing this to you anymore. If y'all would, why don't you introduce everybody, because the media's here, and they might not know everybody. I do, and I'll let you introduce everybody, if you would.
Okay. Of course, I'm Linda Jameson. I'm the happy chair of the Historical Commission. With Beverly Davis, Neil Barton, Paul Hendry, Kathy Harbor, Martha Agar, Ager Goodwin, and Linda Cool Spachy. See, I've known a lot of some of these people a very long time.
Yeah.
Thank you so much, Judge. I have a few, few things I wanna say at the commission. First of all, I'm gonna present you with a, a certified copy of our report for 2022.
Thank you. I will.
But I thank the county judge and the Commissioners Court so much for all of the assistance that they give us. Most of the things you probably don't realize, yes, they do give us, uh, stipend annually to be able to do our work. They furnish all this space, they have a wonderful facility, the Martel Building, and another room for our, to archive our records. We're most appreciative for all of that, y'all. But, um, Jake particularly is only a text away. I appreciate his help always. Uh, and also our county commissioners, they help us primarily when we start to install one of these big, huge heavy markers. And they're with their crews to help us install it. We appreciate their help so much. Recently, it's been Bruce Karbowski's crew, because we've had two big markers in the city of Liberty and that's its precinct. But we thank all of you, because we did follow each and every one of them as we moved throughout the county to place markers. We have a little, we have ongoing work that y'all probably are not aware of, besides surveying cemeteries and making sure that markers are repaired and in good shape and are replaced if something happens to them. Uh, we also inventory National Register, uh, properties and reported Texas landmark designations. We monitor this physical conditions of cemeteries in our county as well as survey and inventory those cemeteries. We participate this year with the THC on a special project to photograph and submit other information on recorded Texas historic landmark designations that will go up on your website on the Atlas. So we did, did participate with that and get our work completed and to them. We assist in one of six consulting parties and other agencies. It's where a tower is going up or a pipeline's going through. Uh, they, they get in touch with us and ask, ask us to consult. And we send volunteers out to make sure that there are no cemeteries there that's not listed as a historic site. There's not an old historic building. Most recently, uh, I attended a, a meeting with Tech dot and other interested parties because of the widening of Highway 90. So, you know, there's a lot of work to be done in that regard. But those are things probably that you don't know. Um, a few of the new projects that the judge will notice when we, we have to have three new projects a year to qualify for, for this award. And, uh, some of our new projects for 2022 included a youth, we, youth history contest, which we try to do every year, but it has to be different. This year, we, uh, you know, kids all use social, social media. So we tried to approach their project from that respect. And we did an Instagram contest where we put up photographs of historic sites in the county. And then they were to respond with a small caption of what that history was, is about. And also, uh, post hashtags. And that was really popular. We had, uh, a lot of kiddos that participated. It was fun judging that contest. We, uh, awarded certificates to those kiddos and also gave them a gift card. And of course, they were, uh, we had photo op and they, we had it write up in the, all, all the newspapers and online and, uh, on social media and so forth. On Blibonit, uh, Bizbat, Vindicator and so forth. Uh, anyway, that was our youth history, uh, contest for 2022. We try to do one each year to involve the youth in our county. Uh, so that's kind of an ongoing project, but that's what we did this past year. Uh, we designed a history walking tour where we partnered with other, uh, civic groups in the county. Um, primarily, we worked Stanham Agralock, remember, we did a walking tour of the old inner block here in Liberty, where we, um, got out and got exercise, but we would stop at various historic sites that still had buildings. Some buildings were still there standing. And we did, our volunteer docents from the commission, uh, explained a bit, kind of a condensed version of the history. Because the history is so deep and rich, primarily here in, in Liberty. There's lots and lots of history. So, uh, we had probably, I would say, eighty, eighty-five people that walked with us and participated in the spray. And it was a beautiful afternoon, and same afternoon, we really enjoyed. We intend to repeat that again this year as well, in the fall. Um, also, um, another project was our pop-up, uh, exhibit. A pop-up exhibit is, uh, a little, again, condensed history on about four or five panels that we take around the whole county. The, not, not just the main cities, but out more rural areas. We go to schools, civic centers, libraries, any kind of public facility. And we set up the display, uh, and it, it deals with, uh, some aspect of Liberty County history. Some usually lesser-known, uh, areas of our Liberty County history. Uh, we had, uh, some of the subject matter included, uh, the CCC or civilian conservation corps, the Mexican prisoner of war camp, and the World War II German prisoner of war camp. Uh, another exhibit that was actually last year's, but we kept it going with this year as well, was early agriculture in Liberty County. So we had that travel throughout. We even took it to the, uh, to, to Rick Brown and, and the, uh, ready to pay your taxes right at the time that people were paying their taxes to, as Rick said, to distract them. So, uh, and it, it worked well, I think, Rick, yeah. So anyway, those are just a few of the things that we, we do. Uh, you know, we have many ongoing prop, uh, uh, programs that we do for, for the state. And, uh, we would encourage you to attend our quarterly meetings. We always have great speakers in July, we'll be meeting in July. We have, I mean, from the Baller Lighthouse to tell you about the history of that part of, uh, Texas, which was once a part of Liberty County. So we encourage you to attend our meetings. Doesn't cost anything to walk into our meeting and sit down and enjoy a great speaker and learn something in the history of this part. But again, thank you so much.
Thank you. You bet. Thank you. Now, your meetings are held in the Martel Building.
In the Martel Building, yes.
Uh, what time?
We meet at six o'clock. And if you'll, if you'll watch, look at our Facebook page, or you'll, there's a press release normally and, and all of the, uh, online and, uh, print media. And it will tell you something about the upcoming program, times, places, and so forth. So, thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you so much. Appreciate everything y'all do. County history.
You bet.
And young'uns, y'all got any questions? Is there Mr. Carter? Thank y'all again. Next, we have, uh, the proclamation declaring June 2023 as Elder Abuse Awareness Month in Liberty County, Texas. And, uh, I think there's some folks here. Come on up. Yeah, thank you. Okay. And Yennis? Yeah, eventually it's gonna get, you know. Now, would y'all introduce yourselves to everybody, please? So Vanessa and the rest of the media folks can get this ready. I'm bad at names and I'm a bad spelling. Don't know that in this state high school.
All right. I'm, uh, my name is Reddell Moleslip. I'm the supervisor for Adult Protective Services here in Liberty. And this is Shannon Del Miller. And it's Tanya Edwards. And they're also case workers on Adult Protective Services.
Thank y'all for coming today. We do have a proclamation that, uh, June 2023 is Elder Abuse Awareness Month. Whereas older adults and people with disabilities, diverse backgrounds contribute to the well-being of the city by working, caregiving, volunteering, and actively preserving customs, rituals, and traditions. And whereas, as we age, hear that? We build momentum by accumulating knowledge, experience, insight, and wisdom that can be shared and enrich our community. And whereas, abuse of older adults and people with disabilities in this community concern, affecting thousands of people across Texas. And whereas, abuse affected more than hundred and nineteen thousand, four hundred and forty-eight older adults and people with disabilities in Texas in 2022. Whereas, abuse against older adults and people with disabilities is grossly underreported because of social stigma, embarrassment, and fear. And whereas, adult abuse affects ten and eleven of all income, and ability levels, all cultural and ethnic backgrounds, and all communities. And whereas, elder abuse is everyone's business. Y'all hear that, young'uns? Y'all, abuse is your business too, okay? Elder abuse is everyone's business. It's important to strengthen our efforts to prevent, report, and address elder abuse. I, Jay, my county judge of Liberty County, in recognition thereof, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2023 as Elder Abuse Awareness Month in Liberty County, Texas, urge all residents to work together to reduce abuse against older adults and people with disabilities that signed this thirteenth day of June 2023. Sign that for you. Thank you so much. Appreciate everything, sir. Thank you so much. Appreciate y'all coming. Everybody, tie that smile. Appreciate you so much. Thank you. Here, we got the young'uns that are gonna stay with us today.
Old brothers.
Hey, y'all, get ready. Yeah. And really, I, I thank y'all for staying. But, uh, you're, you're about to get the short lesson on how government works. Uh, not city government, but county government. And how the, maybe the parts play between the state and the local government, which would be the city. But also, you know, what the county does. And it, uh, contrary to popular belief, we just don't shake hands and kiss babies and go out to lunch and meet with people. We actually work, okay? So it, this is gonna be fun for y'all, and it's gonna be really fun for me, okay? Alrighty. We have any public comment today? Maybe I didn't hear anybody sign up, okay? Conflicts of interest? If you want to have any conflicts of interest on the agenda that need to before we move any further, okay? Uh, consent agenda. We have any add-ons to what today, Dwayne, or Kim?
I'm gonna just, out of an abundance of caution, add on the, uh, the power payment to Kim alongside out of the different attorneys.
Anything else?
Along with the additions, make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Okay. Yeah, motion, Bruce, second, Leon. Any further discussion? All say aye? Likewise, next. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on to our regular agenda from, uh, our farm marshal. And I think Nat, you're here today. If you would, please come on up here and let's talk about this. Number eight dash one is considering approved order permitting sale of fireworks for the Fourth of July in Liberty County, Texas. And, uh, now, the young'uns from the elementary school, you're not gonna believe this, but yeah, we had to talk about fireworks, okay? And it is important, because what happens if it's dry, hadn't rained in, in a long time? If somebody sets off a bottle rocket, and then we get a fire? So we had to talk about these things, okay? So then, there you go. So if y'all have a question about that later, you can get with Nat and ask him all the questions you want, okay? Alright.
So, uh, yes, it is Fourth of July. Um, and traditionally, they do wanna sell and pop fireworks for the Fourth of July. We have had a little rain. Our fire danger is low at this time. I checked KBDI last night. I believe it's at three oh seven. Uh, and as, as usual, uh, with court's pleasure, bins and sticks, which are probably the biggest contributor to the go crazy kind of stuff and, and end up with fires. The, anything with sticks or bins, I know that's one of the things that we're gonna exclude. Uh, whatever the court's pleasure.
Yeah. This is for the Fourth of July, of course, but how many total, uh, events do we have throughout the year where we consider fireworks? About five, yeah, five of these.
There's New Year's Eve, let's say Texas Independence Day, Cinco de Mayo, Veterans Memorial Day, and Fourth of July.
Yeah, alright.
This will be the last one. Fourth of July is the last one until we get to New Year's Eve.
New Year's Eve, yeah, okay.
Can we state the dates?
Ma'am?
The dates?
The dates for each one?
Well, no, no, just for the, this one.
For this one? What do you, I mean, it's not, it's on the Fourth of July.
Well, there's, the selling season is ten days, and that generally expires, uh, midnight on the Fourth.
Okay.
It's June twenty-fourth through July.
There you go. I was hoping someone would.
The twenty-fourth. Okay, so June the twenty-fourth through July fourth at midnight. Alrighty.
Make a motion to approve except for excluding sticks and pins.
Okay. Motion from Bruce, second, Greg, any further discussion? All favor say aye?
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thanks, sir. Appreciate you. Number two is from our tax attorney, Lime Barker. Consider and approve the bids on deleting tax properties as follows. We had number one was Stewart, uh, bid number two, six, one, eight, one, three thousand. Number two, Smith, bid number three, eight, eight, three, eight, for four hundred dollars. Oh, did you get them? Number three, Women Land Company, ID number seven, three, zero, two, six, thirty-one hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Number four, Birdwell, bid number seven, two, eight, one, three, for twelve thousand. Number five, Smith, bid number forty-two, three hundred, for four hundred. And again, Smith, bid number forty-three, two, twenty-five, for five hundred and seventy-five dollars. Y'all had the opportunity to look these over. Are there any?
Yes, and as always, I've, I've looked over it. I had one question on number one. I got the Lime Barker yesterday. They answered his questions. Everything looked good. I didn't make the motion to approve all six. Beggar.
Yeah, a motion from Bruce, second from Greg, to approve all six as presented. Any further discussion? All favor say aye?
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number three from JP, number five, up in Darkin Prairie. Judge Brown, consider and approve the annual renewal of Top Sync Texas with co-logic in the amount of thirty-three hundred and sixty dollars. Uh, that's out of their technology fund. Dwayne?
Yes.
Okay.
I hope so.
Darf. I hope so, yeah, okay. Any questions?
Or motion to approve?
Thank you. A motion from Leon. Second from, was that Greg? Yeah. Any further discussion? All favor say aye?
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number four is also from Judge Brown. Uh, consider and approve the purchase of Brother Laser fax machine, the Gospel Precinct Five office, at the amount of two hundred and twenty-nine dollars, ninety-nine cents. It'll be paid from the JP Technology Fund. Again, no problem with that. What's court's pleasure?
Make motion to approve.
Motion from Leon, second from Greg, to approve. Further discussions? All favor say aye?
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number five, Commissioner Karbowski. Consider and approve the donation of a hundred and eleven thousand dollars from Republic Services to aid in repair of Hatcherville Road, also known as County Road 486, due to damages caused by the company's road use. Bruce, you have anything you'll discuss on that?
The disposal well right there off of, uh, Hatcherville Road. They have, uh, donated the a hundred and eleven thousand to have it paid from their driveway to the county line. Uh, I think it was very nice of them. Have to make a motion to approve.
Alright, we got a motion to approve. Bruce, second, from Greg, any further discussion? All favor say aye?
Aye.
Likewise, nays. And that motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number six, from Commissioner Karbowski. Consider and approve road use agreement between Liberty County and Republic Services. You're gonna get them on a road use agreement now, okay? Yeah, I got you. For the use of a portion of Hatcherville Road in Liberty County, Texas. Pretty self-explanatory. Uh, Catherine, anything good on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Another word, problems.
Motion from Greg to approve.
Aye.
Was that, that's, uh, second Leon?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Motion, uh, second from Leon, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Likewise, nays. Motion carries. Number seven, from Ms. Chambers. Consider and approve an electronic kiosk system to be purchased from Covenant Communications, Houston, Texas. It's number two, zero, zero, nine, oh, four. That includes a Crimson AV kiosk. It's not marooned. Come on. Okay, inside the courthouse on the second floor with a special Crimson AV kiosk. Inside the courthouse on the second floor with a special Crimson AV kiosk, outdoor kiosk near the Travis Street entrance. Both of which will provide public access to the notices posted on the new county public notice website. Replacing the bulletin board on the second floor, which has been there for a hundred years.
Well, it's code compliant when it was on or at the courthouse door, but it's not anymore.
Right. For a cost of twenty eight thousand, three hundred and forty dollars, seventy eight cents for equipment and installation, which will be paid by the county clerk through the records management fund. His owner near the courthouse door. The county clerk's office is required by multiple statutes, including trustee sales and meeting notices, election notices, court case dockets, citations, and other statutory notices. Lee, anything you want to add to this?
Now, we looked at several vendors. This vendor was not only low vendor, lowest amount, but they were from Houston, which means they'll be nice and close for servicing and maintaining the equipment. They're going to do all the installations, my understanding. One will be outside of the courthouse for public access and the other will be here inside the courthouse for public access. There will also be a website that the public can use to access and look at the postings. This is kind of standard stuff. A lot of counties do this. One of my colleagues even said she has a kiosk in the parking lot. So hopefully we'll be able to expand this to the other courthouses once we get it working correctly, but this is a big step forward. The way we're set up out here, I saw a pregnant woman try to climb up there and open that door and almost fall. And that's when I knew that this was a lawsuit waiting to happen and it needs to get replaced. It took us a little while because of all of our other conversions, but we have the website up. We have everything set up. We're ready to go, which is need to buy the equipment and install.
All right. What's court's pleasure?
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion from Leon. Greg, is that a second? Second Greg, any further discussion? All favor say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. And thank you, Lee, for the explanation. That's gonna be pretty cool.
I think it will be.
Yeah. Number eight, JP three, Cody Parish. Consider and approve a contract between Liberty Justice of the Peace Precinct three and Visual Language Professional for interpreter services. Catherine, you want to explain this a little bit for us, please?
Certainly. So JP three has a defendant who is hearing impaired.
So he has a.
Yes, a hearing impaired person. And it is required under the CCP Code of Criminal Procedure that a court provide interpreter services.
Ms. Catherine?
Yes, sir.
Could I ask you to kind of step up to where I could hear you a little better, please?
So the Code of Criminals procedure provides that a court provide interpreter services, whether it be language, whether it's a hearing impaired person, and that's what this this particular vendor is for. They are certified in ASL for this particular defendant. This is an approved vendor. I believe that the county court at law number one already has a contract with this particular vendor. And so this is what Judge Perich is asking for, that he is allowed to enter into this agreement. Obviously, it's amount of his budget. But this is simply approving him to contract with this vendor or this particular defendant.
We approve. Second.
Motion Greg, second.
What's the cost, Jay? What is the cost of this?
It's gonna be billed on as needed basis, the way I understand it, Leon. In other words.
They'll be working an hour on an off an hourly rate, I would imagine.
Correct.
Right. So they they won't just be hanging out there at the rest or the annex. Yeah, okay. All right, got a motion from Greg, second from Bruce to approve. All favor say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number nine from Mr. C. Consider and approve repairs due to lightning damage by Palmer Street by A one telecom for eleven thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars. They got a sixty percent down payment, six thousand, ninety six dollars after approval.
Change the eleven, one sixty is ten thousand, one sixty.
Ten thousand.
And this is, you know, Nick's always spending money. This is Nick still.
Well, as he gets new tennis shoes.
Now, I gotta, I gotta call my neighbor and notice saying that our extension office and our intelligent healthcare office had no network phones anything. So going out there investigating the site, that beautiful lightning storm that came through that weekend must have hit in the general area and we come to find out that the grounding rod wire had been severed that goes to our raft, our network raft at some point. Could have been landscaping. We don't know. But unfortunately, it took out quite a bit of equipment and phones. So we have them temporarily set up right now and running, but you need to get the equipment replaced to get them for the operation.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion Leon, second from Greg to approve. Any further discussion? All favor say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Number ten from Mr. C. Consider and approve award of bid twenty three dash eleven. Construction of a metal building and equipment shed on Farm Market Road fourteen oh nine. Utilizing ARPA funds for road and bridge number one. Award based on the LGC section two, six, two point zero, two, seven, C.
Okay, we went off the bids for the building and the equipment shed out fourteen oh nine. We had five bidders. The lowest was Myron McDowell, construction four hundred and eighty nine thousand, four hundred and fifty. Make a motion to award McDowell a little bidder.
Don't surprise them.
Four eighty nine, fifty, I think. Forty nine, four fifty.
We got a motion from Bruce, second from Greg to approve. Any further discussion?
And we do have McDowell here if there's any questions.
Myron, how you doing? Good to see you. Doing great. All right. All favor say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. All righty. Number eleven is Mr. C. Consider and approve solicitation of asphalt overlay services.
Okay, put this over in that third. This is for precinct one. It's for the number five, the hundred and eleven thousand dollars to do the code. Since then, we've thought about it. It's a little bit different, but they did the same price that we did when we did the asphalt overlay for ARPA. And this is not ARPA, but I think it's under their same price. So I was just taking no action on that. Make a motion, take no action.
Motion from Bruce, second Greg, take no action. Any discussion? Aye. Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number twelve, Mr. C. We're just wearing you out today, buddy. Considering approve solicitation of roof replacements for Dayton Annex.
Okay, we don't normally have this many in a year, but this will be our third one. And it was put over fifty thousand, so we can move on with this.
Okay. So we're just listening right now.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg to approve. Any further discussion? All favor say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number thirteen from Ms. Salde. Melinda, if you would, come on up. Consider and approve payment to Schaumburg and Polk Incorporated for invoice number twelve, nine oh one dash zero, zero, one, in the amount of ten thousand, eight hundred dollars for sewer improvements to the City of Ames, for the City of Ames. Okay? Pretty explanatory, but.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And this is coming out of the ARPA funds, and I did have everything signed off by the city manager.
Okay.
Prior to.
Yes, ma'am.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion Bruce, second from Greg. Any further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number fourteen. Ms. Salde is consider and approve payment to Schaumburg and Polk Corporate for invoice twelve, nine oh one dash zero, zero, two in the amount of thirty six hundred dollars for sewer improvements for the City of Ames.
This is also coming out of the ARPA funds, and again, I did have the invoice signed by the mayor. For approval.
Motion Greg, second from Bruce. Further discussion? Be none. All favor say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Well, Melinda, we're just gonna wear you out today. Number fifteen. Considering approve accepting Santa Fe sixes nine and nine A road into the county's two-year road maintenance plan. LJA has completed their inspection and the recommendation letter is in the packet.
Yeah, we had LJA and we had the present form and out and checking nine and nine A, and there didn't seem to be any issues. So we are recommending it go send to the two-year maintenance.
Make a motion to approve.
A motion from Leon, second. Is that Greg or Bruce? Second from Bruce. Any further discussion? All favor say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number sixteen, Melinda. Considering approve the request from Colly Ridge to replace the surety bond with a two-year maintenance bond. Makes sense. For Santa Fe section nine and nine A, LJA has completed their inspection as of May thirty first. That's just usual procedure for this. Okay?
When it goes into the maintenance.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion Bruce, second from Leon. Any further discussion? All favor say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Melinda. Appreciate your help today. Number seventeen from Ms. Webb with Veteran Services. Consider and approve the Veterans Grant Award of fifty thousand dollars. Continued for twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four from the TVC Fund for Veterans Assistance. And Ms. Webb, come on up and visit with us a minute, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So basically, we're just, they accepted our continuing other grant. And we just, they gave us the award. And so we just need approval so we can sign off on and move forward.
You gotta put it on the quarter. It didn't happen, right? Okay. All right. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. What's court's pleasure?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Greg, second Leon to approve. Further discussion? All favor say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eighteen, well, for me. Considering approve the reappointment of Gail Page to the Tri-County Behavioral Healthcare Board of Trustees for a two-year term, and we discussed this with Ms. Page, and she has agreed to continue her service. And we do appreciate her service.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Greg. Second from Leon. All in favor say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number twenty, Harold. He's up here. Let's talk about these minute. I did. Yeah, I did. Sure did. Never mind. Consider number nineteen, considering approve the execution of TCEQ Form Notice of Intent to operate a citizens' collection station for audit purposes. Catherine?
These are standard forms that need to be completed by us and the city of Dayton in order to move forward with proposed plan for us to continue to operate the donation.
Standard procedure.
No, just that one because it's switched channels.
From city to county. Yeah.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion Bruce, second from Greg to approve. Any further discussion? All favor say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Now, Harold. Consider approve the following vehicles as surplus and approve for trade-ins for new vehicles from Liberty County Sheriff's Office. Well, one, two, three, four, five, six.
Real low.
Yeah, okay.
That's self-explanatory, but I do want to say that Mr. Ned, you're talking, is working very hard to get rid of all that old junk that's been sitting over there and get them off our off our hands and use them as trace ins. And what a pleasure it is to work with him because he keeps us informed on everything he's having. It hasn't always happened that fast. But he's been doing a great job. Nothing gets your fault. Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion Bruce, second from Greg to approve. Any further discussion? All favor say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Well. Y'all like that one. You're really, really gonna love this one. Okay? For Mr. Post and Ms. McCarty, and since Ms. McCarty is gonna hopefully explain all this to us. You can't do anything unless you got a title. Correct. Okay, so considering approve a letter from me on behalf of Liberty County, authorizing Sergeant Hedrick Liberty County Sheriff's Office to obtain new titles on the following vehicles. And there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Eleven old junk vehicles out there. Is that right, John? That's about, if you're there? And we can't get rid of them unless we have a title to get rid of them. No. Well, no. Nobody's gonna take it. So what I'm asking is to authorize Sergeant Hedrick to obtain new titles. Now Catherine, is there anything we need to know about this that?
All that this is, is a simple letter that allows Sergeant Hedrick to go to DPS in Belmont and obtain new titles. Then there will be further procedures that he will probably come back to the court and ask to declare an easy surplus or salvage or know if they're gonna be sold to another entity, something like that. This is just a first step in a long process.
Now, these are new titles, replacement titles. What would you really call them? I mean, I'm just out of curiosity because I don't know.
That would be a question for a certain user.
This certain models, because they're lost, they have a certain title. You can only get it from DPS or from the state of Texas.
Okay.
Replacing lost probably doesn't know where they're at.
Leon, you know how that works better than I do.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. All right. Got a motion from Greg to approve.
Second.
Second from Bruce. Any further discussion? All favor say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number twenty-two. From Ms. McCarty. Discussion and potential action shall occur regarding approval of the filing in the official minutes of the Commissioners Court of the following fully executed and complete instruments approved by Commissioners Court on May first, twenty twenty-three. A. Economic Development Program Agreement executed by and between Liberty County, Texas and Liberty County Solar Project LLC with its effective date being May the fourth, twenty twenty-three. And the access agreement executed by and between Liberty County, Texas and Liberty County Solar Project LLC with its effective date being May the fourth, twenty twenty-three. Catherine?
So all this does is affirm that the court approved and executed the agreements on May first, and they are subsequently, they subsequently been filed in the minutes from that day. That's all this does.
All right.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce.
I'll second.
Second from Greg. Any further discussion? Yes.
Okay. That's two things. Wow, okay. You know my answer.
Okay. Motion Bruce, second from Greg. Any further discussion?
Nays.
Let me call for a vote first, Leon.
You asked for further discussion.
All in favor say aye. Likewise, nays.
Nay.
There it is. Okay, we got two for one against. That passes. I vote. I vote. Yes. That's three. Okay. And that motion does carry. Thank you. Next item up. We have some executive session discussion here, and I would ask that the court adjourn, if you go into executive session under five, five, one point zero eight seven and five, five, one point. under five five one point zero eight seven and five five one point zero seven one Local Government Codes, uh, or discussion potential action on two items, number twenty-three and twenty-four. Uh, at this time, need a motion and a second and a vote.
Make a motion, go on to second session.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg. Any further discussion? All favor say aye?
Aye.
Likewise nay. All right, we're back in regular sessions, nine eleven, eleven AM. Um, we had roughly, well, three items we were discussing in executive session, we're gonna bring those now to the regular session. Uh, item one was the uh, Trinity River Solar One LLC, post-solar facility, and the other was Industrial Kilo Project LLC, post-solar facility. And what is court's pleasure?
Item twenty-three, twenty-four. Make a motion, take no action. Beggar.
My votes.
Take no action, but yet allow legal representation to continue with negotiations?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion and a second, motion from Bruce, second from Greg.
Hang on.
Sorry.
Bruce, Greg, no. Okay.
All right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Likewise nay, so that motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Out of number two, or on the executive session, uh, move forward to the regular session was, uh, Commissioners Court to consult with and seek advisement's attorney regarding a possible litigation for the failure to compensate Liberty County K-9 handler under the Fair Labor Standards Act. And I believe here we're asking for authorization for the Commissioners Court attorneys to consult with the opposing party legal representation regarding compensation of the Fair Labor Standards Act. Is it pretty much it?
Just allowing us to talk to, um, the local counsel.
What's court's pleasure?
Move to approve. Second.
Motion from Greg, second from Bruce to move forward with, uh, allowing our county attorneys to, uh, consult with the opposing party legal representation. Any further discussion? All favor say aye?
Aye.
Likewise nays, and that motion does carry as well. Bruce? There you go, we got a motion. Second from Greg to adjourn. Any discussion? All favor say aye? Likewise nay, is that motion carries? Really, Bruce, he's another one on that one.